I went too late myself. That's my sister for you, like, super late but somehow perfect timing. But my grandmother, it was August 9th is when she was born, so she was just like, you know, house-sized in August. Don't worry Tracy, I'll throw myself on this grenade for you if it's too tempting. I won't brave you.
All right, we're going to call us to order. We have a quorum, and we're going to ask us to start with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, so before we begin, I would actually like to take a moment to recognize we have a hero in our midst. She's going to get mad at me for saying that. I read the newspaper the other day, I don't know if you all have. Officer Barnes saved a life. And... And the thing I realized as I was reading the newspaper article is, this isn't a isolated incident. I will guarantee he has done things like this before, maybe not this pinpointed, but definitely he has saved people before, and I will guarantee he will do it again. That's the job. And we are so, so very lucky to have him in our community. And I just want to thank you for your service for our community. Thank you.
Be clear, I became the face of the effort, that was the team effort all the way around. Remember that?
All right, now I have to get going. Adjustments to the agenda. We are going to add district goals, 25, 26, to new business. Do I have a motion to accept that adjustment? Do I have a second? A second now, Victoria. Any discussion around adding that? Also, Victoria.
Oh, no. I wanted a discussion sign, I was really good.
That was going to be very casey.
I'm sorry, I was really good.
All right. No discussion? All in favor? Thank you. So we will be moving that to new business. All right, approval of the agenda. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the adjustments?
I'd like to add that I was in fact here on that evening.
Oh, okay, for the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So we'll add that for the minutes. Okay, so for the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the adjustments?
Oh, the agenda.
Or is it down?
I'm sorry, is it?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the adjustments.
Thank you, Jonathan. Doug will second it. Do I have any discussion around the agenda and accepting it with the changes? All in favor? Thank you. Check things off as I go because I got discombobulated last time we met. All right, now we're to the approval of the school committee meeting minutes. We did have one change. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes with changes? Motion, Christopher, second.
I will second that.
Victoria? Do we have any other changes, discussion around the minutes? No? All in favor? Beautiful, thank you. All right, public comment, 10 minutes, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Ed Homer.
Beautiful, Ed, come on up. Or stand right there and talk, whatever works for you.
Unfortunately, I did not have the opportunity to witness, to listen to the training session that occurred before the last meeting with Riley Kane. I'd heard her speak many times at the education committee testimony. And I'm sorry I missed that, I had no idea what she said. I did get in on the meeting a little bit later on YouTube. And I know how to say this, but it was terrible. The voice was horrible, very little of it, I could distinguish what was going on. So it was, at that time, that recording was not very good at all. Not knowing what she said, there were a couple of things I wanted to tell the committee. And they dealt with the obligations that I believe the committee has. The first, and I think foremost obligation, is one to the students and their parents. You have an obligation to give them a quality education, I believe that's a given. The problem I have is that currently, with the DOE data, that data pretty much says that the Wisconsin School Department is a failed system. This is some of the recent data. It shows the number of students above and below proficiency levels for the various categories. And it's disturbing. What's especially disturbing is what's happened over the last two years. This has gotten more worse over the last two years. And it was a delight to me to see on the agenda for this week, academics and curriculum. Because I think that's the place to start. This was particularly disturbing when I see numbers like in math, 74% of students below my expectations. To me, that's a failed system. And this is not my data, this is DOE reported data. You can all go to the DOE dashboard and verify this data. This is the way it is. We do not have yet this last school year, this is the year before the last school year this year. That won't be available for probably another two months or so. Typically sometime in November we'll see that data. So I want everybody to see that because if parents are leaving and we don't know why, it may be because they don't feel they're getting a quality education. There's also a number of issues, I don't know that it's really relevant to discuss it at all, but I'm hearing from many teachers and superintendents about safety in the classroom. And it deals with chapter 33 on restraint and seclusion. Chapter 33 is one of the DOE's rules for the schools. There is a group forming to attempt to make changes to chapter 33 on a number of ways. The primary way is to allow a teacher to defend herself. I guess the way chapter 33 is written right now, a teacher is not allowed to do that. And there's been over a thousand cases here in Maine where these students have gotten violent, they attack teachers, they attack other students, they destroy furniture. And chapter 33 pretty much limits what they can do. So there's a group forming to try to make some changes to that and force DOE to have a public hearing on the subject. There's been a number of bills presented to the state legislature this past session. They all got shot down. All of them were out not to pass. So that's a real concern. If I go to that same website and look at Wisconsin data, one of the things that I find is that in the elementary school, 24% of the teachers are less experienced. In the middle high school, 35% are less experienced. I look at that and I'm initially concerned, but we're going to continue to get new teachers that need to eventually get that experience. When I look at that, I look at the opposite side. Why are we losing our experienced teachers? And that's an area that I think the school committee needs to look at, needs to do some exit interviews to understand why are we losing our experienced teachers? And some of the answers may be very simple, it's time for them to retire or they relocate. But I do believe the school committee needs to look at that and understand that. The other thing I have down here is you need to get involved in the curriculum, and I was delighted to see that on the agenda announced, that great step forward. And finally, one other thing that showed up on the data that I don't understand, I'll simply bring it to your attention, is that at the elementary school, chronic absenteeism is 31.1%. In Wisconsin middle high school, that's 61.4%. I don't know what the definition of that is, so I can't talk to it, but those numbers of themselves are alarming. So I'm asking you to put some effort into understanding that. The other obligation that I'd like to talk to very briefly is what I believe is a fiduciary obligation to the Wisconsin residents that are paying the bills. You have an obligation to understand the money and where it's going and what it's used for. And I bring that up because when I looked at the last audit review, the one thing that stood out from that audit review was the lack of a management discussion. Typically, in an audit review, there's one section, it's called the management discussion, where it focuses on the process by which requirements to spend money are made, how they're approved, and how they're paid, the entire process. It is lacking in that audit review, it is not there. And they call it out and say, this should be done, it is not here. We've simply looked at the numbers and seen that they all balance. That was alarming to me. And as many school board meetings as I've been to, I've never seen the superintendent or any of the principals come to the board for approval to spend money. And that concerned me because the warrant says to see what some Wisconsin school committee will be authorized to expend. Every article was written that way. You have the authorization to spend money, and I would appreciate very much if you established a process by which people came to you and said, I need to spend this much money next month, this is what I spent last month, and let's understand the money each month. Now, part of that, I think, is necessary because when I tried to determine during this last budget cycle, and the next one is about six months away, I had trouble comparing, what is reasonable for a school of this size? And I ended up going to Richmond School, which had an elementary and a middle high school, just like we do. They have a greater population than we do here, greater enrollment than we do here. And they accomplished that education program for $2 million less. So it automatically raises a flag to me, what should this cost? Now, every area is different, all schools are different, we have different special ed kids, the whole situation is different. But there needs to be justification for $2 million expenditure than compared to the school. And the other thing that concerns me is the state subsidy. For your information, there are really two things that affect the amount of subsidy we get. The biggest one is enrollment. As enrollment decreases, our subsidy is going to decrease. The state subsidy is distributed in accordance with the municipal tax evaluation. And Wisconsin is screwed up. They are supposed to evaluate every 10 years. They have not for more than 15 years. And when that happens, the IRS, the state IRS, estimates the new property value. And I've listened to the IRS trying to explain how they do that, and to me, it's not very reasonable or very logical. So we're seeing a high property valuation with less students, and we're going to get less subsidy. Now, in the derivation of that subsidy, on the EPS form, the 279 form, I should give you that first page here. Paula Gravel at the Department of Education does an incredible job of trying to understand the cost of education here in Maine. She's got a team that does that, looks at it every year, and actually looks at it throughout the year, to see if they got things right. Now, this is the first page of a six-page document. And what happens with the Department of Education is they look at the student enrollment, the number of teachers, the cost, et cetera, an incredible number of parameters. And I would call to your attention, why our subsidy is low? And I've circled the items. And ready here. If you take a look at the first one with teachers, with the enrollment that we have, the Department of Education says, if you look over to the right of that, it says that we should have 24.39 teachers. We have 39. They're only going to fund what they believe is necessary, the 24, that's part of why our subsidy is low. If you look at the other item I have listed, add tax, they say we should have just under three. We have six. Again, another part of why our subsidy is low. And finally, the school administration, their number is 1.44, and we have four. So as we go through this next year, I understand the budget was approved, as we go into the next budget season, it's time for us to look at, why do we have so many employees? And are they justified? And they may very well be justified. From this height, looking at this issue, I see excessive employment here without sufficient reason to explain that. And I would ask the school board to pay attention to that and get a good understanding of that. Let's see what else I had, I think that was it. I think that was it, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Leadership updates, my understanding is, because it is open house, but our leadership team is not here tonight, which makes all the sense in the world. Those were sent out ahead of time, I'm assuming everybody has read leadership reports. Were there any questions on leadership reports?
There's one that we didn't get ahead of time, and it's raised for adult ed.
I'm sorry, and you are here. Is there anything you'd like to share with us?
Have you sent it out?
I don't know that we have it. So just summarize for us.
Thank you, I'm really excited to be here, devoted to both UCLA and Wisconsin this year. We ran our program out of Wisconsin High School over the summer on a very limited basis. Academy of Medical Professions offered their lab classes here, so that was very exciting. I wanted to give a special shout-out to Coastal Maine Regional Broadband, Redner Wisconsin. They donated six laptops to the Wisconsin program, and they're working on donating charging carts, both for Wisconsin and buffet. Wonderfully supportive organization. And just really happy to be here, we have two students enrolled already, and I have appointments to enroll more students every day. Thanks so much for welcoming me.
Thank you.
What was the name of that couple that donated that to us?
Coastal Maine Regional Broadband. Part of Maine, the Maine Connectivity Authority.
I just wanted to add it to those we have for supporters and stuff, making donations, stuff like that.
And they're, I mean, they're wonderfully supportive. And if you have any.
Wonderful. Were there any, sir?
Just wanted to make sure that all of these leadership updates will be online, will they still be online for us?
Yes.
And since you brought that up, a question for you guys. Do you want those linked live before you see them? We haven't done it in the past, but I don't know why we wouldn't. We could just put them on the web, when I posted on Friday, now it's Friday, it's a Thursday, with the supporting documents, I could post them all at the same time.
I don't see any reason why not.
You'd be able to see them.
Yeah.
We get to see them.
And on the minutes, we can just slap draft across them as a matter of fact.
Yes, absolutely. And then that way.
Yeah. And then that way they'll be available.
Beautiful.
And save us a step later, because it's actually taking the links off is more work. So this would be.
Well, and it also allows for questioning if anything comes up, so that would be great. So, do we need to take a moment?
No, I think it's enough to that. It's fine.
Beautiful, do we have any other questions around the leadership reports?
Superintendent, are you going to give the report?
You are. So, here we are. All right, well, opening days, so August 26th, we welcomed seven teachers here for staff orientation in the central office, which was a nice, small number. We've sent higher, two more teachers. It's been busy, but August 27th, we took all the elementary school, middle high school teachers and administrators and student support specialists on a field trip to Camden, that was sponsored by the MECO Superintendents Association. And we saw it amazing. He's really internationally acclaimed speaker, Weston Pechnick. And he was highly inspirational, he was very smart, he was very funny. And he talked about teaching and what good teaching is, and getting back to basics, and encouraged teachers to recognize that they have the tools, and it's not about the tools, it's about the what. Like, what is the purpose, what are you doing, and not to get distracted by smart TV, you know, Google Classroom, AI, all of the different sort of shiny objects. And people felt great. I was a little nervous, like, oh, are they going to be annoyed that I dragged them up to Camden? But I wouldn't have done it if I didn't think, I got to see him speak at a big meeting last year, amazing guy. So that was great, and that was a really expensive thing that we didn't have to pay for. Has anyone ever thought about having to go to Camden?
Oh, no, I have to go to Camden, it's so beautiful.
Sometimes driving through Camden is tough in the summer, but the high school's before that part. So August 28th, we did our opening day for all staff. We started in the elementary school because our gym is under construction. We did a bunch of annual reviews of the required trainings. We did, and we did it in a different format, so this is my third year, and I think I hit on something that was good, I had positive feedback from people. We did kind of a, like a round robin, but without the eliminations. We divided the whole staff into five groups, and they went to five different stations and heard bullying and cyberbullying prevention, Title IX and Maine Human Rights Act, restraint and seclusion, student confidentiality and burpa. By the way, the restraint and seclusion, chapter 33, was recently modified, and that's been published until that was included in that training. Bloodborne pathogens. And then after they separated and went to their separate buildings, there was a review of all of the school's emergency response plans. On request of a school committee member, I've also included the other planned trainings for the 25, 26 professional development and early release days. So we have two PD days and 10 early release days. So we have to do safety care for select staff. We have to do ALIS training for new staff and ALIS refreshers for all staff. We already have started preventing and responding to challenging behaviors down at the elementary school. Pre-K students supporting toilet training, we've got autism awareness training, restorative practices, it's going to be made available to all staff, and that's an opt-in. PBIS training is at the middle high school, that's Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And then, Count Me In, it's a high school attendance collaborative, and there will be training care for that. Policies, so a couple of things. Last week when I was asked to provide all of the curriculum, which we have to do, you have to do on an annual basis, and that's a policy. I went back in time to look and see when's the last time it was done. I can't find when the last time it was done, it's actually. But when I was reviewing 22, 23 school committee meeting agendas and minutes, I discovered that in the spring of '23, just before I started working here, there were 11 policies that the school committee adopted that have never been posted or published anywhere. They don't exist in our electronic database, they're not in the paper manual, and they're not on our website. So those need to get posted, and I wanted to draw to your attention that you were aware. There were a couple that were specific to school board. One was a school board and, or school committee and social media policy. And another one that was peculiar for you guys is school board relationship with staff. So those, we just discovered them Friday, I still need to find, I'm going to dig into some to a prior superintendent's Google Drive and see if I can find it electronically there. If not, Cindy can type them up, we do have hard copies from that board book. The budget passed by the two-vote margin. Probably a dozen people reached out to me to let me know that they were the two votes. They were like, I saw your Facebook post last night at 7 o'clock, and my husband and I went down. So that's a relief, we can move forward. Marine Learning Project, there will be a planning meeting held towards the end of September, beginning of October for next year's season. Our SE, that's our Elementary and Secondary Education Act title funding. We received substantial approval with a couple of edits requested, so that's great. For staffing, we have open positions, still a gifted and talented teacher, which we're calling now accelerated learning. We can use another at Tech III or II. And we're going to need a bus driver to post that, which will probably be filled by an internal candidate. And then, Transportation and Facilities Director, I have that noted as being on hold until winter of 2026. I think we're actually, I will post that in October. And at our next meeting, talk to you guys about developing an interview committee for that. And then, student count. After, so when I made this report last week, we were at 369. We are down to 363. It's just completing paperwork over the summer of students who've transferred to different places.
Your numbers include the cohort two program?
Yes. Yeah, so our numbers I wrote it down by tonight. So I just wanted to point out that our numbers are up pretty much at the elementary school, 167 went up to 178. And part of that is pre-K, last year we had 14 in our pre-K, this year we're at 18 in pre-K. But we also, I've mentioned this before, but I did sign about 12 superintendent agreements from students and residents to come to here, primarily the elementary school. The middle high school is down, and then I was just curious. So starting next meeting, I want to break it down by middle school and high school. So we've got 66 in the middle school as of today, and 119, nine to 12. That is, that's our report.
I was going to say, I'm not usually a math guy, but your June numbers don't make it that right.
Oh, that's awesome.
And I also wanted to ask with the Marine Learning Project, who's going to be in the planning meeting?
So that is a collaborative between Marine Learning Project, which is a nonprofit based in Portland, Wisconsin School Department, and several other entities around the state. So over the summer, I did a couple of outreach events along with other volunteers from Marine Learning Project. And the goal is to build a coalition of educators and mariners to build this program. So, and we had a big meeting in April, and there were representatives there from Maine Maritime Academy and the Marine Trades Association, University of Southern Maine, University of Maine, the Landing School, which is a two-year college that just builds boats, building. We had a guy from the Marine Industry Defense Fund there. And the mission is to connect Maineers with careers in the maritime industry. And the guy who's behind it, who owns the And the guy who's behind it, who owns the Spooner Harvey Gammage, he also owns Portland Yacht Services and Portland Shipyard. And his vision is to have, to drive people into the marine workforce because there's a shortage. And, but his, I've heard him say it many times. He's like, we don't, we don't want someone who can weld a straight line. We want someone who can weld a straight line because they love ships and they love the ocean. And so, that's, that's the sort of mission. And Wisconsin School Department is, is the connection to public schools in the state of Maine for now. And so, that's who will be coming to the meeting, and there will be, I can share more information if you're interested. I kind of kept the board informed along the way, but it's, it's, you know, I think one of the goals for next year is to have the boat available to public school students during the school year. And so, there, there's actually a project happening right now that is being, it's through UMass, but it's being coordinated by the owner of the Harvey Gammage and a professor from University of Southern Maine to track climate change and the Gulf Stream and the impacts on the right whale population. And so, he's reached out to, asked me if we would have classes that would be interested in participating in a project like that. And we happen to have a climate and ocean class this year. It's being taught by Mr. Ray. And so, he indicated that he would be interested in his students participating. And just kind of kicking the idea around, we thought, wow, wouldn't it be neat if as a culminating unit of this class or, or a lesson in that class would be two or three days on the Harvey Gammage Island Sea, like tracking right whales? And so, that could possibly be in the spring of '26 or the fall of '26, stuff like that. Pretty exciting. And I don't, we didn't talk about it, but the Harvey Gammage was here in June at the town dock, and that was really fun. And I look forward to her coming back next spring and, you know, maybe spending some more time in town. If it's okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
The policies that have never been published, do they be presented to the school committee for approval before publishing?
They were approved by the school committee that we have, the paperwork that shows that they were approved by that school committee at that time. So, they came up as a first read, a second read. They were supposed to be published online at that time. They were not. But they are not five years out of date, and we look at new policies as they come up five years out of date or if it's something that we have encountered that the school needs us to look at. So, those policies will be published, but if something comes up in the meantime that makes us go, oh, wait a minute, that's not appropriate, then we will pull that in for a first read after that. But they are not five years out of date yet, so what that school board voted in would stand until such time as either five years expires or we see a need for a change. So, that's how we're proceeding with that. Sir?
Can you give me the policy call letters for the board and staff relationship? I'd like to have that one. I'd like to take a closer look at that. So, if I just have the call letters for that policy, I'd like to take a look at that one. Should be looked at further by the board.
I'll have to look up. It's not on the website yet. It will be.
I've heard about this relationship between board and staff, a number of board training meetings. And I don't necessarily agree with this, but I would, where is the policy? I'd like to take a closer look at that. My next question, if I may.
Yep.
Pre-K numbers. Do, did I understand superintendent that we have 18 pre-K students?
Yes, that was the number.
Does that require two pre-K teachers? Do we have two pre-K teachers?
Should I respond to that? Oh, yes.
Yes, we have 1.5 pre-K teachers and we have three full-time ed techs.
Three full-time ed techs, one and a half teachers for 18 students. That's including Cohort Two staff members? Do you know what number is a five-ed per Cohort Two versus, versus pre-K? Cohort Two is only kind of, only 18.
So, one of the staff members is a, one of the ed techs is a Head Start ed tech, so we are not funding that person. That person is funded but through our ed tech, our Head Start Collaborative. And then, we have two ed techs that are funded fully by Cohort Two. And a 1.5 teacher is funded by Cohort Two. So, in the local budget, there is one full-time teacher and one full-time ed tech. We haven't filled the full-time ed tech. We've been able to utilize Head Start and Cohort Two to staff the classroom to the benefit of all and not yet the local budget.
Was Cohort Two's pre-K's all one program? It's not Cohort Two, kids come in Cohort Two classroom?
No, no, it's one pre-
Only two kids are one pre-K program?
It's one pre-K program. It's a universal pre-K. Everybody's included. Not everybody is included.
Is it split into multiple classes or is it one class of 18?
It's one, one class of 18. They have, we have a new pre-K space that we built over the summer, and it's, it's three classrooms together. It's in the downstairs of the elementary school. It's got a new bathroom in it and store. That was all funded by the state.
Three ed techs, one 1.5 teachers. So, what we currently have, we didn't, so we have one teacher and one ed tech. We didn't have one of those budget.
We have one teacher and one ed tech in the budget, and of those two positions, we are paying for one. And all the other people are probably-
So, they're physically here, or does it mean paid for by Cohort Two or?
No, we could hire one more ed tech if needed. We have it, we have one more ed tech in the budget that we haven't filled. We could if we needed to. We don't need two currently. We've been able to leverage our other relationships.
Just to bring the board's attention, I'm quite certain that there's criteria for how many students must, can, can attend based on how many teachers are there. I'm not sure how you can have pre-K being there all day and have a one and a half teacher. I don't understand one and a halves and borrowing this from that. But I do know that there is criteria for numbers of students per teacher.
Yes, yes, we don't want to over-employ anyone, so.
I'm sorry?
So, we wouldn't want to over-employ. Yeah, so. There are, there are numbers, there are numbers that are student to teacher ratios for early ed that need to be met. I believe we are meeting them through our own staffing and through Cohort Two and through Head Start at this time. Is that what you're asking, Ken?
Oh, we have 18 students. We have four people physically in the classroom. That's a, we're, we're on violation of-
In Maine, in the pre-K.
Don't worry.
We're not in violation, but the limit is 16 and per classroom. And we got a waiver to bring it up to 18, and we're stopping there.
I would assume it's because of the space that's available.
Yep, yep. You need to have, I think, 36 square feet or 38 square feet per student. We have 56 square feet per student. It's a beautiful space. Well, I think it's beautiful. It doesn't have a great window. It could be more beautiful, but.
Beautiful for a basement.
Yeah. And I am looking for the, those.
Yes, yes.
We don't have a school board relationship policy already?
This was, this was in March of 2023. There was a docket of policies that the school committee approved at that time. And that was one of the policies that was in there.
And we might have some redundant policies.
So, that's completely new, that was a completely new policy at that time?
It's before my time, so, but yeah, I think it's completely new because there's no record of it on the website, and there's no record of it in the book, the physical board book. And there's no record of it in the, not the board book, the policy book. And not in the online policy database that exists. All right, I got it. So, I don't have it. Policies discovered. All right, so it's K, do you want all of them? Does it, does the public want all of them?
Do you want all of them or do you just want that particular one?
I, just the one that, in regards to board and staff relationship.
Okay. Well, there's one that's relations with boosters and parent groups. That got tabled. And then, there was school committee member use of social media. That's BEB. There's a voting method. School committee communications with staff. It's BHC.
Thank you. BHC. So, is the policy committee reviewing those or they were never?
They were adopted by-
They were already adopted by board before us. We, we look at policies every five years. If there is a question on a policy, we do pull it up earlier. So, if you all are looking at that and then you're like, wait a minute, what is this? Certainly, we can pull it up and look at it. We're not-
I was curious. I'll, I'll go online and read them. I was curious why they were tabled or why they didn't arrive or?
They weren't tabled. I think it was just a-
So, why were those tabled?
The boosters weren't tabled in sort of the June meeting and then it dropped off.
If there's a clerical or if there was a reason those 11 minutes ago threw up for COVID or, we should look at and find out. I mean, I'll do a little grant.
Right.
I guess human error.
I, I, my take on it was, it was because they didn't get posted. Like, they got handed off and then it fell apart. And not that it wasn't voted on because the minutes showed that they were voted on.
They were all voted on.
And the one that was tabled seems to be like it was similar to when we tabled something and then the policy committee looks at it and goes, oh, wait a minute, we don't really need that one. And then it just, but there's no following up on that loop.
Yeah.
So, we should follow up on that loop. But I think that's how it read.
They're not posted yet, but they're going to be posted.
Yeah, I just discovered it Friday.
Policy.
And then, and then what I want to do, so I discovered it Friday. I want to go and look because I was looking for approval of the curriculum, right? That's why I was going through board minutes. And when I saw the policies, I'm like, wait, these don't ring a bell. And then I looked them up and they're not there. So, what I actually think I should do is audit that whole year for policy.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that's on my to-do list, in case there are any other things.
We may see this come up again.
It was when there was an interim superintendent and then there was a change in staffing in the central office, and I think that just-
So, we'll get these things cleaned up. Do we have any other questions on leadership updates before I move on? Are we good? Any other? All right. Going once, going twice. Discussion items, old business, budget update.
We did it. That's it.
All right. Any questions on budget update?
I was going to, the lessons learned, people showed up, but the ones that did are still very clearly divided and very closely. Could have gone either way, a couple more people showed up, so I think we're getting a hard look at this one complex.
Absolutely.
Sorry to get some feedback from the staffs and families, community, what direction they want to head in, so we can clarify, look at it.
Absolutely. All right. B, approval of the WES student handbook.
I don't think you have a hard copy this time. You got the hard copy last month.
I actually did give them copies.
Oh, you did, Sam?
Because I was like, I didn't bring them.
I know, I just didn't know if they'd bring them, so.
I did, though.
She has no thanks.
Well, she was right.
Sorry, I'll go back.
Thank you.
Is the, is the elementary school the wolves and the high school is like the Wolverines?
Or?
Okay. For some reason, I'm seeing there, both Wolverine sounds very close about school. That's not the same as the Wolves. They're not even related. Terminally. They're great. They both have some beautiful hair.
Yeah, I'm like, I understand why people would feel related, but they are actually very good. Yeah. Has everybody had a chance to read them over, look at the? All right, do I have a motion to approve the WES student handbook?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion around this.
As you and I discussed earlier, with some of the, some of these documents, I mean, there's grammatic errors and punctuation errors and stuff like that throughout. So, we want to pass it without, that's fine. I'd like to go through and, and make one more pass at them and, and just for stuff like that. Not substantive issues, but just make them clean documents in that regard. And so, but yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go through.
Christopher has editing background, by the way, for anyone.
So, a serious, powerful issue to me is the Oxford comma.
Okay.
It's so important.
It's, it's really important, and it's inconsistently used all throughout here. The Oxford commas, you know, you have three things in a row.
Do you believe in it or not believe in it?
It's absolutely vital.
Right, I agree with you. I agree with you.
And in fact, in 2018, in Maine, there was a $5 million cost, that comma cost $5 million to the oak, oak-
Oakhurst Milk. I remember what it was, Eric. Yes.
So.
Yeah, no, it's critically important. I actually put some Oxford commas in the emergency response plan. So, I did. As a matter of fact, like on the cover.
Love it.
Yeah.
But it is, it's important, it's a professional document.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it would want them to-
Or they would want to wait, revise and edit them and work on them.
I'm concerned that the school needs to move on as far as having a handbook that's-
You can approve it but allow grammatical.
Yes, that would be my suggestion, is that we approve it, but then get it cleaned up grammatically.
Or back in punctuation.
Yeah, not, nothing substantive. So.
I think that's fair.
So, is that a motion? Can somebody give me a motion?
Motion to pass the Wisconsin Elementary School handbook with an asterisk for grammatical editing.
Do you want the?
Was that correct?
Yes, and double seconded. Do I have any other discussion around that? All in favor?
You should have seen me in the policy. I did exactly that, just with typos and pauses like that.
I have no problem with the policy, but I did find it typo.
All right.
I would put two Es in there.
Brings us on to the Middle High School student handbook. I have feeling it will be.
I think that is.
All right, so, do I have a motion to approve this handbook with?
Actually, I have a question about one item that I, I didn't know. The teacher detention and office detention, how do they differ meaningfully?
They do. So, a teacher detention is where any teacher can assign a student a detention to stay after with them in their classroom. The office detention's a little bit more formal, and it's when a student has some infraction, like maybe three tardies, and then they are automatically assigned an office detention and they stay, they have detention in the office after school. It's a little bit more.
So, it's, right, so it's just an escalation of sorts. And then, if, if, there was a line in there about the parent guardian consultation or phone call. We seem kind of late in the game. Is that?
Yeah.
If somebody gets a office detention, they don't get a call to the house. But if they get ISS, is there, there's not a phone call there either?
Definitely. Families are informed. It's definitely a phone call.
Oh, okay.
Does it not say that?
I don't think it does.
Yeah.
Should be, it's not, it's not listed for all of them. Some of them say specifically that second offense, we call a parent. But I think the first offense puts, you have the office detention. Parents would know, they used to do it on offense.
I agree. A teacher detention, I think, should also be a phone call.
I think any of that.
I feel like the more frequently we call our parents, the better, and it should start at the teacher level. So, we-
I think they might want to write it.
Okay, so now I'm going to back up. Does the WES student handbook have the same kind of discrepancy?
Probably not.
Well, it's not.
Probably not.
Well, I don't think they do detention.
They don't do.
They do, I don't think. It's not necessarily the same as the high schools.
Okay. You can kick that back if you want, and, uh, and we'll look at it again.
So, I mean, is it enough to say, in practice, we do this, even if it's not necessary?
I, I think it should be reflected in the handbook. I.
Send it back.
I think we definitely need to.
I think definitely.
That would be my.
Correct interventions that need to be done if the parents were notified. They have no idea, and we could have their support at home trying to correct it before they said. They don't know, parents should be involved in actions going on with the child, that's not an ordinary.
Especially if you kick back the school, like, you've gotta tell people, huh?
Even if they're not getting a detention, when I was the, um, assistant principal, I would call and say, look, this happened, and we talked about it, and I want you to be aware.
Anything out of the ordinary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
So do we wanna send both of these back to make sure that they're both looked at, or?
I'm not sure, again, if they, I'm like, I don't think the elementary one is necessarily because we.
I can see it either, but I'm asking, let's.
If we don't do detentions, then like, it wouldn't.
But.
I didn't see the same verbiage.
Okay.
Lack of verbiage in the elementary school, which, that's doubt, there's quite a separate portion of the high, middle high school is, like, it lists out infractions, like, you know.
Right.
All the consequences for it.
Yeah.
Agreed.
But I don't, unless I, if I have kids like that, I don't see anything. They have like a expectation mech- matrix, like, where you're supposed to behave, certain behavior is expected. Some of the P D S stuff, I didn't see anything as far as, okay, well, if you don't stand in line, you get the wrong.
Right, right. But I didn't know if.
But, we may, whether it's in this handbook, but if we're gonna put it both handbooks, we'll put a clause in there of any type of corrective behavior, you know, that mention of which would be a phone call.
Mm-hmm. And I think you're very good about that.
I, I'm certain they are, but.
Middle high school with the dojo. So.
Mm-hmm. Back and forth.
But I think maybe it should be written, and similarly to what Jonathan says.
Is it in our policies?
As far as the communication with parents, but, I don't, not that I've seen, but definitely, I miss something.
Right.
It's in our policies.
I think it's.
Right, but if it's in the policy, it should be reflected in the handbook too.
Yeah, I don't think it's in the top, um, there are policies that deal with discipline, but I don't think they have that. In those levels of, we have to address this.
So when are these expected to go out to students?
They're already going out.
Or they, they have them?
Yes.
So we're, okay, so.
They're, they're being called a draft right now.
Okay.
We have to still approve them. Do we wanna send them back for one more round? And say, hey, can we have wording put in that we want parents to be informed?
One thing, though, you've already taken action on the help, the West one.
Uh-huh.
So you, um, you would need to make a.
So now I need a motion to.
A motion to rescind, if that's what you choose to do.
Motion to retract the motion.
How, how are you gonna, how are you gonna, how are you gonna able to table both these?
I, I think first we have to rescind the W E S student handbook.
Yep.
Approval, so we need to motion to do that. And then I would say that we would table both of these to add further.
First, I'll, I'll motion to rescind the approval of the W E S student handbook.
So that we can have wording added.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion around that? All in favor? Okay, so we did get rid of the approval for that. Now, do I have a motion to table these to add the language that we have just been discussing?
Do we have to table them separately, or can we table them together?
I think we can do it together.
Uh, yes, I'm moving, we table these, uh, having some corrections.
Table both handbooks until we add those corrections. Okay, and Jonathan seconds. Do I have any other discussion around that? Alright, all in favor? Thank you, everybody. So, they will continue to be drafts since the next time as we get them.
Okay.
Alright. Committee status, standing versus other.
So at the last meeting, you guys asked me the report, I have the difference, um, of our committees.
Mm-hmm.
And I did a little, wrote you a little report. Um, but basically, you can think of, um, the Freedom of Access Act, and what that law, um, covers. And it covers, um, all of your school committee meetings, and it covers all of your subcommittees of the school board meetings. And the subcommittees of the school board are, like, your finance committee that we have, um, your policy committee. Um, tonight, at finance committee, we talked about adding facilities and operations under finance.
Mm-hmm.
So those, those are, um, all public proceedings under the Freedom of Access Act. Um, then there are internal school committees, which your student retention committee is, um, and also the safety committee, with, the safety committee is a internal school committee. Internal school committees can have other, a member from the board, and they can have members from, um, this staff or select people from the public. And, um, those meetings and minutes do not need to be public. But, there's a caveat, if one of those, and this is important because the student retention committee will do this, comes and gives advice to the school committee, then that discussion needs to occur in public, and that, um, discussion would be voted on by the student retention committee. The emergency, um, response plan and the safety committee, um, it's, that's like an internal school committee. But also, those, um, documents are widely understood to be, um, com- to be held confidentially because of safety concerns. You know, we, so I talked to a couple of other superintendents about this too. Um, and one of them made a little joke, he's like, well, yeah, you don't wanna, you know, have everybody at the safety committee meeting and say like, well, the, the side door is left open all the time, you know, and have the public present, like, that type of information is, um, you know, should be held close. For safety reasons, yeah. So that, that is my report, and then, um, I was, I had to go back in time and look at the dropout, the dropout prevention committee, which we have renamed to student retention. Um, because I thought, is that a standing, a standing subcommittee of the board? No, and it's, it's not, it's, um.
I would think it because we're discussing students, and that would need to be kept confidential.
Yeah, and right in the, the policy itself, it says the superintendent shall establish the dropout prevention committee. Um, one of the other, um, deciding factors of whether it's a subcommittee of the board is who authorizes it. So if this committee votes to have a, um, an ad hoc future of the schools, then that, then that would be a public committee. But where, um, this is a, something that school administration had to create. And, um, and it's, uh, outlined by law, who needs to be on it, and a school board member does need to be on it, so.
So the meetings, or like the dropout committee, wouldn't have to be public, but, um, their presentations, like, to the board, being like, this is what we researched and recommended, not what happened in public in a board meeting.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions around that? Are we good? We're gonna move on. Going once, going twice. Alright, um. Committee reports, policy. Oh, that's me. Alright, so. Now I go. Find where I'm at. Um, so we bad. There we are. Um, so, at this time, we, um, did meet on the field trips and excursions, policy and procedures. We had some, um, feedback from, uh, Sarah at the high school. She sent along some information, things to think about. We did talk about that and add things into our field trips and excursions to reflect the needs of our community. Um, school, we also went over school volunteers, volunteer administrative procedures, volunteer agreement forms, school volunteers, authority to release information, volunteer application forms. Um, clearly, all of those deal with being a volunteer at the school, and, um, what that means, and what kind of criteria needs to be followed in order to be a volunteer in our schools. Um. Drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, that was one that we've tabled a half dozen times now. And what we finally came back to was, as always, and I've said it before, policy needs to reflect law. So we looked at why the policy states the way it does, and it does because what it's referring to is, um, the holding of a C D L, um, in order to drive a bus. So, in order to keep your license for a C D L, for, to be a bus driver, um, drug and alcohol testing is part of that procedure that is by law, so we made sure that our policy reflected that. And, um, then the final one was school board meetings, we pulled that one, that one was not due. But we pulled that because this year we've made a change to the timeframe around school board meetings. We're trying to accommodate the needs of our school board members this year. Um, it's always been on Tuesdays, but we decided that we wanna make sure that everybody is available and able to be here, so we have changed it to Wednesdays. So we have changed the wording on our school board meeting policy, because it did say Tuesdays, and we've changed it to an agreed upon day, um, for the school board. So. Those are the policies that we worked on last time for the policy committee. There's my report, any questions? Sir?
The meetings are the second Wednesday of every month.
Yes.
Except July and August.
Except July and August, it'll be Tuesdays. To accommodate me.
Thank you, families, for joining us at our open house this evening. We will have parent-teacher conferences in November, so information will be sent out about that. Thank you for coming tonight.
Wonderful.
You don't have to go home, but you can stay here.
Yes. Alright, um, finance committee report. Is that a move?
We met earlier, um, to discuss the formatting of the finance committee, how it kinda looks, how we, what we wanna see ahead of time. We have, they, they provide us with a line-by-line budget, I've kinda seen them under process monthly, for cost actuals, we spent some part for that month. We've agreed that we'd like to see it like a week ahead of time, and we don't need to go through it line-by-line, by line during the meeting. Well, we requested it's not similar to this, we rolled off another district's site. That we can have a tangible document to hand to you guys at, at these meetings. And it'll be broken down by cost center, and what we spent, what's left over, the cost actual monthly. So that we're not just showing up saying, oh, we have nine percent left, we can actually break it down. And we can bring habit with us to ask questions at the meeting to be prepared. We're also gonna, they're gonna improve, uh, include capital boom projects, updates on those monthly where we're at, um, grants as well, so we can include those in our bullet point overview, so when we show up for meetings, we'll have a document already prepared from Kathy, and we can hand that out, so there'll be actually something to read and see, what we can see.
Well, that way we can have a national discussion on both the budget.
That'd be great.
So now, we had, so we talked about today, so a vote effect for next month, because next month we'll actually have prepared documents to bring for finance reports.
It takes a couple of months to get it planned.
Yep.
Working in the right direction.
Does anybody have any questions about where the finance committee's going with this? Thank you, John. So? Alright, update on community engagement and involvement committee, back to y'all.
There's, um, I think everybody got a copy of, uh, drafting, draft of the West Metro copy, it's on the table, so we haven't seen them. This is nothing set in stone, this is just kinda like a mission statement. The vision is to enhance our engagement, community partners can gather valuable feedback. First, we're, I just, we're establishing a board liaison role dedicated to connecting with our community partners. The liaison would serve as a crucial link between the board and these groups, fostering stronger relationships. By conducting regular check-ins, the board would gain firsthand insights into how we can best offer support. The lia- liaison could then provide a report on ongoing activities and support efforts at our monthly board meetings. Secondly, I propose that the board draft and administer quarterly surveys to families and staff. These surveys would provide cr- critical feedback on the perception of the districts and identified areas of improvement. And finally, suggest that the board take responsibility for the issuing of exit, exit surveys for both staff and families, for the above listed reasons. And all proposed surveys would be optional, and they would offer an anonymous response action or option. So if somebody didn't want their name put to something, names are, uh, critical, but we'd still get that information back to us directly in the board. And then I just listed, uh, both principals of both buildings. I've been working amongst all our crazy schedules to get me a list of all of our partners that are supporting us, with donations, fundraising. That's all listed out, you can see there's still some openings for contact, email addresses and phone numbers. They're still, again, it's beginning of school, so kind of some slack, but as they have time, they'll fill in those blanks for us. With the idea that the liaisons will, liaison or liaison will reach out to them, whether it be on a monthly basis. Hey, where, what are you guys going on this month? What do you have for activities? How can we support that? How can we push that information out for you? Uh, and that provide an update to the board, and a, a overview update monthly of, these are what we got going on for activities, these are what we got going on for fundraisers, this is what we got from data, from surveys, uh, et cetera.
Thoughts, ideas?
So, there, I mean, there's a lot of administrative weight here. Do you guys gonna be going through surveys, Italian, and, or, or, or did you want me to do? Well, whatever the, whatever the liaison is.
That would be your job. Yeah.
Is it, okay.
Well, I'd like the surveys to be administered from the board directly, and the data can be directly back to the board liaison. Um, and then that can be distributed to the board. That's just, that's my recommendation. And whether that's the liaison goes through that data and compiles the things, or they're as a board, we could sit down with actual surveys at a meeting, or not with a corps, but they get distributed appropriately, so that everybody can see the questions that were asked, the answers. Again, they're anonymous and optional, so nobody has to take any of it, just, anyway, they're asked to get direct feedback.
It gives us kinda feel for the belt of the school, how about the atmosphere, you know? How are people helping, what ways can we help them out?
Yeah, no, I, no, I think it's a great idea, I support it certainly, I'm just wondering how much time.
Like, who's gonna be, you know?
Right.
Like, are we just dumping out the job of the school secretaries?
No, I think we should, I think we should handle it. I think that we've left it to the school administration, the superintendent, but I'd like to have that direct connection, so staff, families, everybody's hearing from us directly. Hey, there's a board survey, if you wanna take it, if you don't, if you don't, great. But we're actually cared, we're invested, we're not just asking a building administrator to do the job for us, we're asking superintendent to have the draft for us. I think the direct communication from us is important, that you'll, make, get that connection going, is part of the communities.
Well, it lets people know we're involved, we're a little bit invested. You know, people, when you let us do things from the top down, people feel a little bit sometimes. And it's not intentional, that's what it is.
Sends a message, we're open, or they can reach out directly. But I don't show up to these public meetings, but that would be a direct connection for if they wanted to submit a survey, if they wanted to send feedback. Um, they, just, keep that communication going.
Do you think that you should maybe review the, um, goals and responsibility of board member policies and the, of band policies that cover this? And what you're describing sounds like a, a great idea, but it is outside of the established policies that we have.
So we might wanna look at policies.
The only thing we have right now is E V A, correct, the school board's powers and responsibilities. Is that, is that the question?
That's one of, there's more.
Also, like, there's like a little list. There's something about a poll on it, like communications, like from the board.
Um, so let's, let's go, uh, I like this, and I think what we need to do next is look at what our policies state, and then where what we, if this comes in conflict with policy, then we need to look at whether we change policy, what, where those laws come from, if there's a reason for a policy that we're not overseeing. Um, I think there's still some work to be done to make sure that we're in compliance, but yet doing these pieces, because I think these pieces are important. I just wanna make sure that we're not overstepping where we're supposed to be. Um, does that make sense for everybody? So I think that's the next step, is for us to go through.
Make sure, make sure policy matches.
Yeah, I think that's.
When the goal line matches. I think the policy is very specific on a lot of things, but generally says, like, it's our job, we're responsible for the day-to-day operations, we have a higher superintendent for that. But it's our job to oversee that, make sure.
Absolutely.
We evaluate, we follow things.
Yeah.
We're responsible for everything, so I think having that open communication, if somebody says, well, how do you know, how do you know for sure, or something?
Right.
We say, well, we asked superintendent, why would we not trust the response to us?
Right, right.
At the same time, if they cut out a piece of, they know they have their own communication as long as it matches policy, so. I'm not trying to take any way of responsibility away or violate the policy.
Yeah, no.
I think it'll fit both, we can review all of that.
I, I agree, I agree, and I think that that's what we need to. I agree. I agree. And I think that that's what we need to do is make sure that everything's in alignment so that there isn't a cross communicator in store what we're doing, one way or the other.
I'd be interested to see the policy.
Maybe a simple concern doesn't end up being a big problem.
Right, absolutely. So is everybody in agreement that our next step should be to look at policy and make sure that we're doing things in compliance with policy as we move forward with this? Okay. Is everybody comfortable? Thanks.
Well, the ones that have, that was over a couple of years ago, they have it online.
Right, we're going to have to take a look at those too. So absolutely. So let's.
I think we were linked to them, but I haven't completed it. They're not posting that, but I guess we'll mention it.
I didn't, I never, yeah. It was before any of us were here, I think.
I got interested to see what they say, how they read.
Yeah.
Because they have a shared open communication. Every district got talked to the board. Board members don't like go in there, all right, let's teach this class. Or why are you doing that as a teacher? But they all have open communication with families, with staff members. If someone walked into their school and said, hey, how's it going today?
This is the forum.
All right, so yeah, let's, let's get a look, let's pull all those policies. And we'll take a look at that, I would say, for next meeting. Let's pull that.
Next policy meeting.
Next policy meeting, but then we'll bring it back to the board. So.
Oh, by the way, I'd help you, of course.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I was digging around, trying to find my minutes from last time. So we didn't, we just sort of established an exploratory group. We didn't, we didn't name a board liaison.
Yeah, those are, I think we still have some groundwork to do as far as all of this. And then we'll start talking, we. Yeah.
And this is just ideas that I came up with. I think I'm not designated person for anything. You guys have ideas or suggestions? Everybody, don't worry, bring your ideas up.
Good.
All right.
All right. Are we all set with that point, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, beautiful.
All is new for us.
No, thanks. Um, regionalization update.
Okay, so at the last meeting, you guys authorized me to talk to Bob Keeler about looking into regionalization and specifically the nine to sixteen grant. Um, so, let's see, Bob and I talked and we reached out to Dwayne Goo, who's been the Wiscasset person on this committee to talk about regionalization, largely with Booth Bay and with Dresden. And we said that we would like to complete an application for the October 31 deadline. We would like to include their ideas. So we asked for that group to present their ideas to us. I think that that might happen on September 23rd. That group is having another meeting, so we'll attend that together. And then our goal, my goal is to bring any application or ideas back to you at our October 10th meeting, eighth, October 8th meeting, so that you can approve it before we actually go forward.
Thank you.
Um, we also talked about existing capacity, or Dwayne and I, so then I talked to Dwayne. We talked about existing capacity that we have here at Wiscasset High School. And we also talked about, you know, regionalizing. If we don't get the nine to sixteen grant, do we still want to have a conversation about nine to 12? And we do. And, and we also talked about our future possible status of minimum receiver, which based on valuations could occur as soon as 2028, which means that our state subsidy would be close to zero, except for some special ed funding. And if that happens, it would be really great if, like, we really need to be thinking about 2028 and being able to share our education bill with another town. That would help a lot because I think we could take, you know, the 150 or 160, however many ninth through 12th grade that they have in another school, fit them in here, and not have to increase costs. Just off of that, anecdotally speaking, that's anecdotally. So that's what I have to report to you tonight.
So you'll have more specific, more specifics for us as of October?
October 8th, correct.
I have a question from.
I don't mean you're talking about consolidation. Are you talking about AOS? I wish you, we've been there, one time before, it was disastrous.
Yes.
What do you mean by consolidation?
Um, we're looking at partnering with another town who, so we're looking at what that looks like. That's exactly what we're asking as well. Is how does, how do we structure that in a way that doesn't bring us down the same path we went down before? So we're looking at that. We, we don't have a pathway yet. And we're, we're trying to, we're putting it all on the table and trying to sort through what works and what won't is really what we're trying at this point. It's very preliminary.
And it's in response to the futures.
And it is in response to the futures at Wiscasset School Outcomes. So we're trying to take a look at all the things that they said, and how, how do we do that? What would we do if we did that? And, um.
Did they, did that, did that committee actually make a recommendation?
Um.
Or they simply provide data?
They simply provided data. So that's, now we're looking at that data. We're sifting through that. And we're trying to figure out what, how do we make that work? How do we make things work? I don't think anything's off the table at this time. I just want to make sure we have everything on the table that's out there so that we know what we're sifting through. I don't want to leave something out there in the world that might have been the solution and not have us look at it. I'd rather throw things away than not have the proper list. So that's where we're at, as far as I'm concerned, anyway. Is that how you're reading it as well?
I agree.
I guess I just have one, a small question. To what official capacity is Dwayne Goo to this equation? Because I'm not sure.
He was the chair of the futures group.
While reaching out to animal units.
I'm sorry.
That committee has been this animal committee.
Yeah, there's an ad hoc committee that he's been.
There's still an act committee?
There's an act committee.
We're all.
No, we are not.
So the voters, the voters said go forth and get the data.
They did that.
The data had been, the scanning.
Yes.
Yeah. They're an independent committee of citizens.
Okay, so Dwayne is officially nobody?
No, he's, he's not a representative for us or the town.
Why are we reaching out to him?
Because he's gathering information and saves us some work.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's exactly it. And, um.
I think that's verified. When is that data coming to the board, from the future of the school committee, or? Or can you set it?
That's what I'm asking for, for the October 8th, because Kim has been, the first step was meeting.
Well, the regionalization piece, because there were several options that came in.
There were several options, and I think that.
Is there a compilation of data for each option, or creative regionalization, tuitioning hours?
Somewhat.
They have a report. Did they give, did they give us the report officially? It hasn't been.
It hasn't been.
We were in the committee for this election, and so I reported that. We won't call this here, we'll have to request a different selection.
I could print it, it's public.
You have.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yes, that would be great.
Linked it on the wiscassetnews.com.
Yeah. And none of this is set in stone. I, you know, that's all day. I don't want anyone to panic and think that we're running, screaming down a path of no return. That is the furthest thing from the truth. I am trying to get it all out there so that we can look at it and say, what is our future? And so I'm not, I'm not trying to shove us in any direction. I just want to know what the directions are. Because I think that, as we have heard with taxes and everything else, we are going to need to figure something out. And we need to start looking at what those paths are.
Because, you know, cost per student is just atrocious to the school class. We have to find a way to fix that while it grows the school.
Right, we, we need to, we need to start looking at options. So, and we might figure out that none of those options work, but we need to look at it. We can't just keep going and not open ourselves up to other ideas.
So just my interpretation, the future of school committees, all the ad hoc committees, all of those are done, they're disbanded. But we still have representatives of the school district meeting with Dwayne Goo discussing options, or are those being held on? You're talking about, you guys have had before, talked about whatever, as part of your ad hoc work. So currently, we're not reaching out to either Dwayne or another superintendent or this person. Have we solidar, have we reached out?
We have reached out to another superintendent. At the last meeting, we gave him the authorization.
I mean, as far as like the ad hoc committee, I misunderstood. I thought we were like, like this week, Matt Dwayne discussed how to regionalization work.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the re, the nine to sixteen grant is being pursued. Let's go back in time even further. In June of 2024, I had talked about the idea of the nine to sixteen grant with the school committee, and I reported what I learned. So Howie Tavell, Bob Keeler, and I met with the state. And the state told us at that time that they're not interested in building a nine to sixteen school within 50 miles of another technical school. And we are within 50 miles of three tech centers. So we put the idea aside, but community members didn't. And so there's been these community members from Booth Bay, Edge Palm, Dresden, and Wiscasset, who have been meeting for months, pursuing that grant. The thing is, they can't write a grant because they're not the school committee, right? Only, only school boards can submit it, superintendents have to sign it. So, uh, it through some, because people have been to those, I haven't been to any of those meetings, but people have been to those meetings, and it was brought to this, this board at the last meeting that I'd be authorized to talk to Bob Keeler about signing off on that grant. But Bob and I agree that we're not going to just sign off on some grant that community people were in. So we, but we are not going to completely dismiss their ideas because they've been working on it for a year. So we agreed that we would hear their ideas and incorporate them into the grant, bring it back to you all for your approval. He'll bring it to his board for their approval, and then decide if we actually submit October 31st. If we submit October 31st and it gets approved, all that means is that we would be eligible to write the actual big grant, which would require a lot of people like work in communication. So by submitting on October 31st, what it could do is it could let us know, is this even an option? This nine to sixteen grant? And if it's not an option, then we can put that to rest.
And then we can move on.
And we can decide like, okay, we're moving on because this is not happening for, for our community.
But we do have community members that are all on, all in right now.
They're portion of our interest in testing.
It's a great idea.
It is a great idea, but we need to, if it is not going to happen, if we're not eligible for it, I would rather get that out there and then be able to move on and look at other things. Because right now, people are picking all their ideas on one thing. And I don't think that's the healthiest way to go. So I would like to explore that among, among other options, but I think that's the first one that's coming up.
And if it turns out that it is, that we are eligible to truly apply, then, then I think that would be very exciting. Because, you know, it would mean a $70 million project. The state would build a new school. And it would probably be located somewhere on the Route 27 corridor. It could be exciting, but, you know.
But at that point also, we're under no obligation. And we would have to put together a team that would actually be authorized to do the work to make, you know, to, what are the pros and cons? Why would this be optional? What, what is, it's a much bigger step at that point.
What's the governance? What happens to the school choice? It's a lot.
Parts and pieces at that point. And I guess, once again, I would rather have things on the table and be able to say, nope, that doesn't work, than to have people out there in the community going, we should have done this thing. That wasn't even a possibility at the first place. So that's kind of why I would like to.
That's what's left, that's.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to do. And, and if it's something wonderful that falls in our laps, okay, then we will take the next steps. But I, I am concerned that people are very excited about something that might not even be a thing. And I, I don't, I don't want that to go so far that people then think that the school's not doing what our due diligence on that. Because that will, that will poison any movement to the future. And I don't want to do that. Does that make sense? What I'm, I'm sorry, I'm very passionate because I. So, yeah.
You're moving the what in.
Right.
Right? Well, you should have, and this takes it away.
Right, and that's, that's my biggest concern. So just that.
My biggest concern is if we do get approved for it, it makes upsetting a message of, oh, you guys are moving towards a regionalization? Some people are against regionalization, and they just want to start their own private school. So I don't want to walk the line of, yes, we want to find out, we're available, but at the same time, no, we're not sending a message of this is what we're doing.
And then, and then I think that's what we say at that point is, we are fact-finding at this time. And then the next step would be, all right, we are eligible for this. Now we need a fact-finding committee to see if this is something that's actually viable. And, um, and something we want to do. So I think that there are, I think there are a lot of steps, a lot of steps between here and there.
All the other communities have to be all in.
And all the other communities have to be in, and there's going to have to be public, all kinds of public stuff going on to get people on board or not, and get that feedback. So I, this is the very first step in all of it. I don't see this as being.
This, come on, if this happened at a moment, there's going to be no traffic on New York next month, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right, so does that make sense to everybody? Everybody comfortable with that? So at the October meeting, Kim is going to come back with, this is where we're at, this is the information. This is what this piece is. Christopher, you look like you're. All right, so does that make sense for everybody, and everybody's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
All right. Distribution of curriculum.
Everybody has it?
Go ahead. We all have it.
Yeah, so, um.
Game plan around this?
Annually, the school committee should approve the curriculum. As I said, I don't know when this has ever been done before, but it is an approved school committee policy that we need to do.
Yeah.
And here it is. There, you've got the pre-K guiding documents that we follow from the main DOE. And then you've got a packet that has our K to five sequencing.
Yep.
And I love it. This, this is the work, this is the result of work that's been occurring over the past two years. It started under Bob England, and we finished last year, working with a rural aspirations, a consultant named Corso. I like very much the layout of this. I like how, I like that it has all of the standards listed specifically, and then the, the sequencing over the weeks. And then these are links, like if you link to actual samples and lessons. So I think this, this K to five curriculum map is great, and this is what I would like to see, six to eight. The six to eight stuff is, I think, not as, not as good. Science, I couldn't find science. It doesn't mean it doesn't exist. But I got the request Friday to put this in, and I didn't, so that that's missing, but that's the science. And then you have the program of studies for the high school, 9 to 12. It's, it's in the statute that you guys should approve the program of studies. Our policy talks about approving the curriculum. It's a lot to absorb. I would say, take it away and look at it and bring back questions when we discuss it next month.
Awesome. All right. So we will be going through these, and next month, we will come back with questions and then from there, talk about approval. All right. New business, district goals.
Okay, you all have the passes around. So also in policy, the school committee should set goals for the district each year. And so I presented to you a couple of suggestions. We have stuff to work on, we really do. And I, I think the things that are most important in my mind are dealing with the fiscal situation. We have to continue to seek alternative revenue streams so that we can offset the burden on our debt payers. so that we can offset the burden on our debt payers, I think. And one of the ways we can do that is to increase enrollment. So I would hope improving enrollment and continuing, continuing recruitment, especially from our tuition paying towns. We get a lot more money per student from a tuition paying town than we do through subsidy. Public relations, I think we have to continue working on the public perception of our schools. Yeah, it takes ten positive stories to counter one negative Facebook post. And we, in fact, we, you know, that's been pushing that ball up the hill, but I think we're making progress. I meant, I wrote right in here, the curriculum alignment, grade six to eight, I would like to continue that work. I also was discussing with Sarah and for our NIASC goals, our accreditation goals, there's curriculum work that needs to happen at the high school. And so that work is already happening this year, so I think that's a good thing to be a goal. And then the.
Will that new curriculum be presented to other agencies or that curriculum work?
I think based on this, it needs to come to you, yes.
Yes, okay.
And it's not creating a curriculum, it's documenting what we have.
Yep.
And a lot of, a lot of the work under district management and organization is documenting what we have. So in our, in the central office, there are not established, you know, an accounting manual. But there are people who have had jobs for many, many years and they know how to do everything, but it needs to be written down, like a step-by-step policy and procedure manual. So we started working on that in the accounting office for human resources and for accounting, for our state data reporting. You know, we've got a lot of due dates and a lot of timelines that have to be met in order to be a legitimate school. Also policy work, you know, and we can see that just based on the policies that I discovered, you know, that the school district adopted two years ago. Well, you have to make sure that the steps are placed so that all of those things then get posted. And facilities and maintenance, this is a really huge one for, for me and my thinking because we've got John Mary retiring this year. And he's been here for many years and he knows how to do that job. And we need to make sure that like all of the knowledge he has gets translated into a document so that whoever comes after knows what to do and so that I can properly supervise them and not just rely on, well, he knows what he's doing because it's John Mary, we're not going to have that. So that's a really important one. And then, and then update the school committee handbook with all of the things that you guys need to do so that we don't discover like, wait a minute, we need to set our goals. And wait a minute, you need to approve the curriculum. Wait a minute, you need to.
Right.
You know, we'll have it in a list of all of the things, so.
And then a month by month as to when.
Month by month and insert it right into the school committee handbook.
Yep.
Those are the, the things on my list. But they're, you, you need to adopt it, so.
How many goals? I mean, do you usually tackle all of these goals?
These are all things I'm working on anyway. So what I, I mean, you guys can set any goals that you like, but I hope that you don't choose like a bunch of really different ones because this stuff all has to happen, I think. I mean, I can shift gears, but these things will need to happen.
I mean, I think, I feel very strongly that we do need calendars for all tasks throughout school board, schools, all the different schools, the administration, all of it. We need those calendars of what tasks have to happen when and.
Yeah.
Get that infrastructure kind of in place so that those who come after us.
Yeah.
Have a framework to work with.
And the public, the PR piece too, the public relations. So people put their house for sale in town.
Yes.
And, you know, someone goes along and looks on Zillow and I had a member of the public reach out to me last week and ask about the school ratings. The school ratings are really low. It's like a two out of ten on Zillow. And he's like, you can drill down into that and find out where it comes from. And it probably comes from the data dashboard that Ed looks at. I can tell you, the data dashboard's not completely accurate.
Those dashboards are from data provided by testing in this school.
They are not completely accurate. And, and I know why and I can explain that. And so I think that I need to tell that story. I need to show like, okay, why, why was the attendance, you know, with sixty-one percent chronically absent? That's never been the reality. I know why it's reported like that and I can explain it. And we've made efforts to fix it. I can explain why standardized test scores like taped, you know, years after COVID. And I can explain what we're doing to fix it. But like that's, that's stuff in the public relations, I think that's important.
And I think maybe you did upon that and I think that's something that I would like to see. I don't know if anybody else would like to see, but something I would like to see is, Ed, you brought a lot of information tonight. Maybe we look at that piece by piece and give Kim the pieces. And then. And then would you, we'll take it piece by piece and let's, I would love to know accuracies, inaccuracies and also what you're doing to.
Fix it.
Fix it, because I think that is part of public relations. So I think it's really important that we address those things and talk about them and see how the school is addressing those. And if not, what can we do to support that so it does get addressed? I think that that is, that would be an important piece around public relations. So you have that information and you handed that off to us. So I would like to see that, not all, all at once. But I think every meeting, if we can hit one of those points and really kind of, like you said, drill into it and say, okay, this was brought to us by the public as a concern. This is what the concern was, this is what our findings are, this is what we're doing to.
Mm-hmm.
Does that work?
Yeah, a hundred percent. And as a homeowner in Wisconsin.
Absolutely.
It would be, it would behoove all of us if I were to contact Zillow and say like, hey, can, you know, can we do something about this? Because I may, I may, anybody may decide that they want to sell their house one day. So.
Um, so is everybody in agreement with me or comfortable with that as something that we do? And each school board meeting, so that we are addressing those things to the public that we're.
Leave it in the discussion, we can make progress. As people have questions, it will take them seriously.
Yeah, so, but I think it's really important to bring those things forward so that Kim has a chance to look at them, come with actual data, explain what the school is doing.
The data, why is the data this way and you want to try to improve it?
Yes.
Well, it's hard to pick someone who's broke if you don't know who's broke.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so everybody, thank you.
Is that a goal?
Yes, I, I mean, I think that's a goal. Would you?
Yes, do you phrase it, is it phrased as a, like are we going to wordsmith it or do I just take that information and run with it?
Folks? Do we need not to?
Well, you need to adopt goals, so you may need to take.
Yes, we do need to adopt goals.
You have to take some questions.
Yes, I think we need to wordsmith that into a goal.
Yes, somebody needs to.
Yes, I, I think it falls under public relations.
Yeah.
Okay, my wordsmith's over the corner, how do we wordsmith that?
Oh, which part? So if you were going to make a goal about improving public perception of the school district by taking concerns. Explaining the data dashboard?
Yeah, I think responding to public concerns.
Producing accurate information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Accurate information.
In response to public concerns.
In response to public concerns.
And perceptions.
And perceptions. Bringing forth information. An explanation of what the school.
In response to public concerns.
Help me wordsmith.
Improve, wait, it's improve public relations.
Mm-hmm.
In, in response to public concerns and perceptions about.
A top, a topic will be brought forth monthly. Dealing.
I was going with regularly address public concerns and perceptions with accurate information.
Oh, I like that.
Thank you.
Christopher.
See, like I said, our wordsmiths.
Can you say it again, please?
Regularly address public concerns and perceptions with accurate information.
Okay.
Regularly.
Make it monthly.
Meeting, monthly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, other ones.
Right. Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, that, that is absolute, that is. And I, and when I responded to the member of the public, I was like, the, the school committee's going to make goals next week. I'm going to approve this and that's what, that's what that came from.
All right, wonderful.
We still work on these and adopt them in the committee?
Yes, I, I think.
Sure.
Are you comfortable with that? I know you need to get them in order to move forward.
I'm moving forward, but you.
Well, it's like you're doing already.
Yeah.
It's nobody even having official like goals or anything.
I do want official goals though.
Yes.
I want to get to my evaluation. Well, you set your goals and then I make, and then I think my evaluation based on who knows.
Okay, so I like Christopher's. Once again, my wordsmith's in the corner. So I, like I said, one of the goals I would like to see is talking about calendars and putting together that infrastructure so that there is a regular schedule for tasks for the school board, the school administration and the schools themselves. I don't know how we worded that exactly, it sounded like I just said, but.
Think about that for a month.
Yeah, think about that. Because I think that's really important. Like I said, I think putting together that infrastructure is necessary for now and for the future because we're not all going to be here in the future. And if we can get, set things in place, then.
In case we're, exactly, we're, we may not all stay here. And, and instead of having a new superintendent every three years who has to figure it out, let's have, let's give them a handbook.
Right, let's.
Right?
We don't need to keep reinventing the wheel.
So let's, let's document.
Let's draw a memory retirement.
Right.
My job was to go around and find the guys that were retiring. How do you do what you do? All this, and trial and error, we called it.
Right.
Okay, well, you're retiring next week, next month, a new guy, that's worked it for thirty years. You need to give me a manual, it's put it step by step.
Right.
Pictures, whatever, because it was machinery, but that shows the new guy, okay, you can come and do his job. You've been here for thirty years.
Right.
And that's what I want to, yeah, we need that for all, for everything.
Everything.
If it makes you feel better, or what the elementary school is for. Thank you, that does make it better. I was curious.
All right, so, but yeah, let's, let's play around with this. And like Kim said, she's already working on all of these things, but let's solidify them into actual goals.
Like your, your idea of.
Right.
If you have ideas for suggested goals that aren't on here, we can follow those to, to the chair. So she can work with superintendent to add them in a document and we can possibly take action on that.
Yes.
Or if somebody has a random, I think they should take over the district, I would don't wait too much for the meeting.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, so please.
So you could maybe take action, great idea.
Yep, that would be wonderful, thank you, everybody. Are we all good? Yeah? All right. Resignations? Do you want to do that or do you want?
Uh, you have one resignation, Jean Phillips. WMH has English and Drama resigned in the last week of August.
Okay, so do I have a?
I will make a motion to accept the resignation request.
Correct, do I have a second on that motion? Any discussion around that?
Uh, do we have any shareable specifics as moved on to the district, is retired? Unannounced, is unexpected?
Unexpected.
All in favor?
How long has Jean Phillips been working in the school class, do we know that?
Nineteen. Nineteen, there's nineteen.
Nineteen. All right, all in favor? Accepting.
I should double check nineteen.
Okay. We believe nineteen, that's not. All right. Final summer hires.
So this, I hired these people under my authority to do that in the summertime. And so that is an interim art teacher, Emily Dobson. And the, and an amazing new middle high school English and Drama teacher, Emily Sue Barker.
Were we only hiring Emily specifically?
Yes, only Emily can work here. We have two.
That's not true, she's making a joke. I was like, what? I'm getting tired now, folks. Don't start throwing me curveballs now.
No, but it's funny, we have, we have two Caliphs, we have two, we have two grades.
Okay, so we need Emily in order to work here. I gotta, I'm picking it up slow. Absolutely.
It's great, it means we, we learn fewer names.
Absolutely, much easier.
Like if I guess a teacher's name is Emily, I've got a pretty good chance of getting it right.
All right, the board would like to welcome Emily Dobson and Emily Sue Barker to our teaching staff. All right.
And you've got a field trip.
Field trip required approval, seventh grade is going to Chawki for an overnight.
This is the annual Chawki field trip, seventh grade is gone. Every year, except maybe two years during COVID, when they didn't stay overnight, they went for day trips. They'll be leaving on Tuesday, there are nineteen students going, they're leaving Tuesday morning, the sixteenth, and returning Friday afternoon, the nineteenth. There are four staff going, two overnight, two in the day, plus one parent chaperone. They will be canoeing, doing animal identification stuff, various group challenges, team building. It's kind of a Wisconsin rate of passage. Just sort of ropes course.
What was the?
There is, I don't know that they're going on the ropes course.
Teacher to student ratio again?
There are nineteen students and then Chawki has a full staff. But then we also send four teachers and one parent chaperone.
Four teachers, two during the day, two at night, or?
And, and is the parent overnight?
I don't know if the parent's overnight, probably, the parent and the student is overnight.
So Chawki has their own staff dedicated to the art classes, it'll be there.
Oh, yeah.
Nineteen students, two staff members at night.
No.
Picture like separation, run your board. They have teachers and staff that work them.
No, they're, and they're top notch, it's like a highly rated, rated camp.
Unless we get really good at teaming up.
And so, actually, it's a really highly rated camp and it's really expensive and they make special arrangements for Wisconsin because they're, we're our, their community.
And this is a yearly, I almost forgot.
It's a yearly thing and one, one of my goals as a superintendent is to see Chawki experience for every grade going.
Chawki's great.
Yeah, Chawki's pretty great. So we do have educators that come to the elementary school. You guys have probably seen them at different events at the Wisconsin Community Center when they bring their animals. And then in the past, when my kids were little, sixth grade got to go canoeing and seventh grade did the Chawki trip and then eighth grade did their eighth grade trip. But, you know, we could just continue explaining, that would be really neat.
You know what the housing arrangements are as far as their five, a cabinet sits five, cabinet sits ten.
They tent, they tent on platforms.
Total class of some experience.
Yeah, they tent, it's out on the peninsula and it's, there's no phones, there's no electricity.
It's optional, they're all going.
They're all going. I mean, I guess you. Parent, yeah, exactly.
But it's a, it's a classic experience, like I don't want to come for two days, so I'm not going. But I guess a parent, at that point, a parent saved my library for some of the girls.
They could, yeah.
Hopefully.
Always. Everybody, I think it's really.
I was in San Francisco, my mom took me, she used to take me out.
The kids are like pretty wildly excited about it and it pushes them outside in their comfort zone and a lot of these, they get, you know, they're just going to. For some kids, maybe it's the first time they've ever been camping, believe it or not.
Chawki's no longer a functioning school, open school if they were a couple of years ago. So what is their background certification?
Well, they still, they still have, they still do summer camps and they still do semester school. So they don't have their day school anymore that they had for a few years, but they do semester programs. And it's, it's very expensive. I know because my daughter got into it and thankfully she didn't go. But it's, you know, juniors go and they stay for a whole semester. They do it in the spring, they do it in the fall and it's a second grant for a semester.
It's like their background, check, anybody that works in over there has a full background.
A hundred percent.
Check them, we know exactly. Check them, we know exactly who they are, it's Chawki, we have the same, exact, the same or similar guidelines.
Yep.
As far as, because they're qualified, because they're teachers.
Yes.
So they still have full background, full checks, we don't sign.
Yep.
I, I, I'm, I'm looking for a question, absolutely.
We've responded to Chawki a couple of times for pretty significant, significant things that I want, want our students exposed to.
Chawki campground or Chawki foundation, is this two?
Right, not, not with the foundation.
Yeah.
Foundation, uh, this was a year plus ago, uh, that's why I ask for background checks, because it's helping to ensure that. And I sense that they communicate with the chief of police about how to tighten up their security and their background checks, so that same people don't fall for cracks and they'll, they'll get voided, trapped, and voided.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to ask, that's why I'm asking, make sure that they're doing, that's all the background checks that we are, so that.
Yeah.
I'm definitely gonna double check now.
Yeah, please.
If you want, if you want to be, follow the chief, he's the one that's working with their director over there.
Nancy Yen.
They're, they're looking for a new background company, because when, it's, it's that occurred, us having to respond.
Okay.
It was, it was before students arrived, it was, um, there's no, there's no use there, it was all adults, but, um, it's an, it's a snickman event where if they didn't change their background process, I would not have done this on our students.
Okay.
All right, so let's word how we're gonna do this then.
But when, when is this going again?
It's next week.
So are you able to call tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll call tomorrow, yeah.
Oh, you can call tomorrow, yes.
All right, so let's
Approve a meeting.
vote to, or I make a motion that we vote to approve this pending the information that Kim, the information Kim gets on background verification for Chawki staff.
Yeah.
Do I have a second for that?
I'm sorry.
Jonathan will second. Do we have any other discussion or concerns around that? I mean, obviously with the understanding that if
I'll leave my question.
there is a question, beautiful, if there is a question, then
Yeah.
For the discussion, that was no dig against Chawki at all, I used to present, because they're small, they're little kids, when they were at school, it was a safety, school safety talks over there, they do, they have a great program, great staff as a whole.
Yeah.
There was a high slave incident.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it doesn't happen again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
Me too.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know about that, so.
It's all a discussion.
All right, so any other discussion?
Tracy, can I say something, you know, just doing this?
Absolutely.
Well, just because I'm a community member, a parent, a grandparent too, all my kids went there, and I've worked at the middle school for, you know, almost thirty years, and every single time those kids came back from Chawki, I never, they were different, so much better. They, they just, seriously, they just, my own kids included, they came back, they were, they were more independent, they were more grown, they, they got along with each other better. Kids that had fought before, were all getting along, you know, they were stinky and dirty and gross and laughing and having fun, and it was just one of the best experiences for these kids.
I, I feel that there is absolutely nothing better than that kind of
Sorry, I should have spoke, but I had to say something.
experience for kids, absolutely, so we wanna make sure that everybody who's dealing with them is probably.
Right, no, no, I don't.
I would, I would.
Yes, I have, no doubt.
To maintain, to maintain that experience.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I agree a hundred percent, that's not hard, saying it.
So yes, that's why I wanna go through with us voting on this tonight, because I think it is super important for the kids. So barring any concerns, all in favor of us allowing group to go to Chawki? Thank you. All right, policy first reads. Yeah. Sorry, everybody, we're running long tonight, um.
Set everything off.
So, um, for first reads, I'm gonna just read the names for each of these, and then we'll vote on it as a whole, that we're gonna accept them as first reads, if that's okay with everybody? Um, BBA, School Board Powers and Responsibilities, BDA, School Committee Organizational Meetings, BEDH, Public Participation at Committee Meetings, BIA, New Board Member Orientation, and KE, Public Concerns and Complaints, these are the policies that Victoria and I will be working on. Do I have a motion to accept those as first reads?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
The motion, second, dug. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, no, go ahead.
Just a procedural question, I guess, is, is, uh, so, I, do I just hand this to you guys, the marks that I've made on it? For first reads?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, please. Um, yes, if you have anything that you look at and go, oh, that needs fixing, please let us know.
Okay.
Um, all right, so I have a first and second, sir?
Um, question on, on the procedure here, are these proposed policies available to the public?
These aren't proposed policies, these are ones that we.
You're asking.
They're already on, they're already passed five years ago.
Okay, so they're already available.
Yeah.
They should be, the new, whatever we do to them in our meeting, that will then be available after they're.
Thank you.
Yes.
They're on the website.
So. Yes, the old ones are still available. All right, so I have a first, I have a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. Policy second reads, so these are the ones that Victoria and I have already worked on, um. Do you all want me to break them down individually, or are we okay with voting on them as a group?
Don't worry, my mom will type those out.
I'm okay, as a group, we'll hold a discussion after the motion.
Okay.
And discuss them.
All right, so the policy second reads, the ones we are voting to move into policy are IJOA, Field Trips and Excursion Policies and Procedures, IJOC, School Volunteers, IJOCR, Volunteer Administrative Procedures, IJKOCE1, Volunteer Agreement Forms, IJKOE2, Volun- School Volunteers Authority to Release Information, IJKOE3, Volunteer Application Form, EEA, EAA, Drug Testing Alcohol, Drug and Alcohol Testing of School Bus Drivers, and VE, School Board Meetings. I've gotta say, EEA, EAA is my favorite one, not, it's the policy itself, just because of the weather. All right.
I'll make a motion to accept, so.
Motion to accept, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Doug will second, discussion?
There were no major changes that we made, I believe there was.
Like, you know, some typos, adding a bit about the water safety, you know.
Mm-hmm.
And then the.
Changing the school organization schedule.
And then the school voting schedule was our biggest
Before meeting schedule. Yes.
change, and then making sure that everything aligned with actual laws and policies
That we have.
that we already have. I think those were our biggest pieces.
That's one of the biggest things we found, our policies that cross-reference policies
That don't exist.
that we don't have, but somehow they're adopted.
So we make a point to really go through that and cross-reference with law and other policies.
So is this not the forum to ask about particular items in the, right, in each, in each policy?
Yeah. Yeah, correct.
And then, and the R doesn't mean revised, or doesn't? No, okay.
No, that's just a, that's just a subset of that policy.
It's usually the, you see, drive, that's the policy.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I got, I got, I have a number of little things. Uh, on IJOA.
Okay.
Um, under Field Trips.
Yes.
It talks about one of our Wisconsin School Committee Employees.
That was a thing we talked about.
Oh, dear.
And did we adjust it to say Wisconsin School, um, like, unit, or Wisconsin School District Employees? Because tech, yes, sorry, you just triggered my memory, because that was one thing I brought up, because I was, I noticed that too, because I'm very nitpicky. I was like, well, the Wis- the school committee only has one employee, it's superintendent.
Right.
So I think we said we were about adjusted to say Wisconsin School District Employees.
I, mine says that. There says district employees?
Wisconsin School Department Employees.
Oh, then maybe you have, oh, well, you probably have an older copy.
Oh.
You have the non-revised copy.
So what's, what's, okay, so that's fixed, did you also fix?
Did I?
Does it say, do you have third review where it says, um, first read August twelfth, and second read September ten?
Not on that one. No, I have IJOA first read August nine, twenty twenty-two.
No, that's, that's the first read.
Yeah, those are all first reads, not all second reads.
That's what I brought, I brought to the video, I was like, we only have one.
The new ones are in the book.
The, yeah, the new ones are, the new ones we received.
Are in the book here.
Yes.
Yes, you're reading the first reads.
Yeah.
Christopher, it's only, like, point changes matters, not requiring.
We didn't change too many things, but that, I remember watching as well.
Yeah. But yes, you're going off of the information you were given at the last meeting, which was the first reads.
Okay, that's my problem then.
Do you?
So, and we put a ratio in there at some point?
Uh, we adjusted phrasing to say, um, and that was also something I noticed.
Well, it's.
Um, yes, I know, we noticed that we adjusted it to say just like with an appropriate ratio.
And we said reasonable, yes.
Because I noticed.
Based on activity there.
The name is.
Right, that's.
I probably also noticed the typos, I'm not gonna lie.
All right, okay. Uh, all right, okay, well then, shut me up.
So.
That's okay.
Okay, so that's what, I mean, that's gonna be the case with all of them, that's gonna be the case with all of them.
Students are a good thing, it might not be the case with all of them, but that was just one specific.
Right, absolutely, I agree with that.
Let me see.
So.
It's, you know.
On the agenda that sets out ahead of time, like, these ones are, it's like when they're live.
Yes, they are live, so Christopher, on your agenda.
Yep.
Where it says second read policies, you will have the live version of the new, of what we've changed.
Right, which I've, um.
So, I'm checking the links right now.
Pretty definitely.
It's in the book too.
Yes, it's in the book too, but
Actually ahead of time, here, you can.
I, he was looking at the old ones, so I just wanted to be sure he knew that.
Okay, all right, so. Um, okay. I'll leave it alone then.
No, that's fine, this is good, please.
Okay, I have other questions.
I'm, I'm opened up to the new ones right now, so if you have any other questions, I can follow along with you and see if it's changed.
Yeah, the links are right. They are, yeah, the links are correct in the, um. Let's check that. Do, do you think you wanna wait, just to prove these out?
First proof you want.
No, 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 I, I, I'm sure that you all have found the alternate, and I have, I, I feel confident in your terms in that regard.
Well, thank you, um.
I have no problem with them, thank you for waiting, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to table, if you want us to table and do it next time, so you'd have a chance to look at both, that is appropriate.
I'd be comfortable if we did, just for peace and love.
All right, so.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to table second reads, until my.
All right, so we need to rescind.
You have to make an option on the table, right?
Yes, so we have to rescind that motion.
I can best.
It's a no, this is what we're supposed to do, so.
You have questions? I'll make a motion to rescind.
Like, so I'm like, oh, you know, it's been so long.
A motion to rescind. Approval of the second reads, he will set, Doug will second that, so all in favor? Now I need a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table second reads.
Beautiful, do I have a second? Christopher seconds. We will table until the, all in favor? Okay, we will table until next time and give every two questions. Yes, we'll have both questions, so we, uh, Victoria and I will still work on the first reads that we're doing tonight, and then we will approve, well, this group and that group second read, it's.
Plus all of this stuff.
Plus all of that. Just some reading ahead of us, folks, all right, so. Public comment, do we have?
Nobody signed up for the second public comment.
Nobody signed up, sir, you've got your hand going up slowly.
I, I apologize for not signing up, because the second public comment is, is for things that we may have heard during the meeting.
Agreed.
And sign-ups are for crowd management, we don't need to worry about that.
And I do not want to drag this meeting up, but the last thing I want anybody to apologize for is conducting a proper and well-run meeting. This has been very well-run, cooperated, with substantial questions, answers, wonderful, you'll never apologize for it, this is wonderful. One of the things I wanna go back to, uh, evidently, Ms. Anderson went to, uh, some training, and I wanna take her at her word, this training told her to go back to the basics, I wanna keep telling this board that they need to, as they look through this curriculum, go back to core academics. You wanna fix this school, show the people out there that you are looking into coming back to core academics. None of this fluffy stuff to try and attract people into our school system, parents want their students to learn core academics. Even the training told us that, I just wanna say that out loud. Second of all, uh, there was a lot of discussion about disciplinary actions in the handbook. Uh, I'd wanna know food for thought, you might have to answer this, but make sure that the handbook reflects new legislation that was passed last year, that you can, uh, discipline lower grades, I believe Ms. Anderson was the one that told me it was LD, and I don't have my other notebook from last year, but I, I know she probably knows where I'm referring to, the way you can discipline younger grades, that law was passed, and hopefully that is in the handbook as well. Once again, I don't, I'm not looking for any comments, uh, or, or answers to that, these are, these are just my comments. The only other thing, uh, the 504 plans, I had a personal incident with this, Ms. Anderson knows very well what happened. I hope the board will follow up with that, if she elaborates, and she has my permission to elaborate with every single board member, because I believe that the policy should reflect, if somebody has an issue that could potentially affect them on day one of school, a 504 plan should be put into place. I don't think that that's the policy as it is right now, it's kicked out a couple of weeks. The incident that happened with me directly could have been avoided had this been taken care of when it was brought up at the last school board public meeting, and she was aware of this, that should have been addressed, that's all I'm gonna say about that. I want to bring to the board's attention, because I was a part of the tour that was happening here of the future Wisconsin schools. I have it on good authority that some students, some parents have pulled their kids from the school district because of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders intermingling with upperclassmen. When we were sold closing the primary school, Christopher, this is pre, pre, uh, pre Christopher, BC, before Christopher. So when we were sold the idea of the primary school closing, we were going to move our lowerclassmen up here to the high school. And we were assured that there would be separation between those younger students. Sometimes, in some instances, we can have a sixth grade girl intera- interacting with a twelfth grade board, for example, I'm just throwing out an example. I think that the board really needs to look hard at that, because I have it on, like I said, on good authority, people that have, students that are becoming into sixth grade are leaving. As a student retention, you might want to look at some of those characteristics or some of that stats of people leaving the school, and ask yourself, why is that? I know of at least two, maybe three, that will not send their student here because of that fact, and I think the board should take a good, hard look at that, and I believe that geographically, you can do it.